And join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible and liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome to our June 5 meeting. Please note Andrew is not here. Mr. Young is out. Our first item for the agenda is items from council. I know we have a couple. I know Mr. Bocknight has at least two, really. Anyone else have anything? Wants to go first or not? Okay. Jeff, you want to?
Okay.
Share what you have?
I'm going to start first with the handout I gave everybody. It's Senate Bill Number Five from 2001. And the reason I gave this to you is Mr. Leesack and I have been trying to get Victoria off of the environmental list. We're listed in this document as an affected county. And this bill was created to provide funding for grants. And as such, we got put on this affected counties. What it does to us, though, is it stops us from making local amendments to any building code. And also by having it like this, it puts us on like an EPA near non-attainment list. And the near non-attainment was also a made up list by TCEQ that we had to be in near non-attainment to apply for the grant money. And so it's caused a bunch of follow-through issues. And since that funding was vetoed in the last legislative session in Austin, there's no more funding. There's no reason to be in affected county. There's no reason to be near non-attainment. We worked with J.D. Kennedy from Congressman's Office. And we chased it through the EPA and they're like, you're not on any list. So JD was nice enough and helped us with the TCEQ. And they're like, well, this, they told us the whole story about being near non-attainment and just so you can get grant money. And well, it's gone, so you don't need to be on that list anymore. This is the last piece of it is this affected counties list in Senate Bill Five. And we've been in contact with Representative Morrison's office. And they've agreed to work on legislation for this next legislative session to remove Victoria from this affected counties list. So far, what they've requested of us, and we have some time to do this, is a resolution in support of getting off of the list and also that they'll want something from the county commissioners. Which I don't think that's a problem. I'll contact them. But Mayor had asked that I give an update on it. I appreciate Mr. Leesack's help. And Mrs. Garrett's been in a couple of those meetings too. Appreciate it. But it's been really eye-opening.
We've been near non-attainment for 17 years?
Yeah.
We're on a list.
We're on a list.
Careful how you say that, yeah.
And we, and because of that, we've had to do two 10-year reports. And you have to follow up, you submit a plan. If I get Mr. Leesack, but he knows about the reports. The two 10-year reports are reporting periods and we've got five years left of the second one.
They're state implementation plans is what they're called. And so we have to submit plans to say what we're doing in order to keep us in attainment and what we would do if we get out of attainment. We have been in attainment for the last, since the date escapes me right now, but it's been-
It's been at least 12 years.
12 years, at least, yes.
And that's from the data when we would pay the graduate students to come do the air testing every year.
Yeah. Unfortunately, Victoria was the very first city in the state of Texas to be out of attainment. And that was in 1971.
Yeah. And this nowhere in here is its contingent upon funding to where like it auto expires or nothing? I mean, they didn't write anything in?
I haven't found anything like that. Neither had Mr. Stevenson in Representative Morrison's office.
Because I started, for lack of a better way of describing it, picking on Blake about it pretty hard. And then I know you had an interest, so you took it and that's great. I appreciate this a lot.
Yeah.
And to people who may not quite understand, being on that list, if you're a builder or you're remodeling or doing some large, and you can appreciate this because of the work you do, this costs you a fortune to, and code because our code enforcement people don't have some flexibility to waive things that might seem common sense. They have to require people to do things that just add a lot of cost.
I'll give you one example. It's in my business. If you install a new rooftop air conditioner, the code requires you to have a device on it called an economizer. So that you can save energy on those days when the outside temperature is below 52 degrees or 54 degrees and the relative humidity is at about 30%. Y'all love those days when we have them, both of them. But that, that, that ad on that rooftop unit is about $1,800. We want to take that out of the code for Victoria because it doesn't make sense for our climate. We can't do it.
But we have to wait for their session to start and to actually-
Yes.
Process something through the, oh, man. Okay.
Yep.
All right.
So hopefully next time, or we, update will be next year around this time.
Hopefully this year, this time next year, we're doing local amendments to our code.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
That's not far off in government terms.
That's not fast enough. No, that's not fast enough. There's a lot, well.
Absolutely.
Okay.
The second item I had was we had a great meeting, I think, with Mr. Hayek at Dick's Food Store. Mr. Jalapaska and Dr. Young and I went over there and spoke to him about what was happening with Crestwood. He had some concerns about right-of-way and his parking on the front. He has a, sometimes elderly clientele and they need to park closer. And he was worried he's going to lose spots is that what happened with Crestwood as we're redoing it in that area. And we got to looking also while we were out there and what are we going to do with Dairy Treat? And so ask Mrs. Garrett to put it on the list here. And I think that hopefully Mr. Reese has an overlay, kind of show us what's happening there.
Well, we don't have much of a design. We're not that far enough along. But we do can show you where our right-of-way is and where his parking is at.
Yeah. Unfortunately, the survey was just complete. And so there's just, there's just not enough information there to have any sort of design or overlay.
And if you don't mind, just a few comments for the public's, you know, council knows this, but for the public, you know, we're starting to reconstruct Crestwood. And so we brought the proposal back to council to do, to do an eight-foot conjunctive use sidewalk on Crestwood, which will eventually go all the way down into, take us to Vine, so you can get into Riverside Park as a conjunctive use, which is an eight-foot sidewalk. So, and when we presented that to council, we told council, we didn't have to acquire any right-of-way. We had it. And we do have it. And so, but, you know, Dick's is using, has had the privilege of using the city sidewalk for their parking spaces for who knows how many years.
The right-of-way, yeah.
Yeah, the right-of-way. They've used the city's right-of-way. So now with the design, with us working on design to institute that, so. So Donald, go ahead. I just want to lay that groundwork.
I think you covered quite a bit of it, actually. You know, as, as we see here, the city's right-of-way falls in between these gray lines. And I would anticipate the design that we bring to you using all of that right-of-way. And that's what is going to be needed to get, what Sharmel described, a five-foot sidewalk on the south side, the three lanes, and then eight-foot sidewalk, conjunctive use, hike and bike sidewalk on the, on the north side. In regards to Dairy Treat, I don't anticipate any major issues there. What we did on Dairy Treat, when we did Laurent, was we put a sidewalk right here and it's a rollover curb the whole way, so they can pull right up under the awnings here. We would do the same thing, would be my anticipation over here for this side. So I really don't believe that Dairy Treat is going to have any, any issues.
Okay. He has kind of worried about the, I think the slope for some reason. It's more on Crestwood's side?
It may be.
Get up into those? And I'm just wondering how you do it with the flat sidewalk that's five foot and then jump up in there?
It's pretty early, thank goodness. I would, you know, when we get to that part, I'd stop the sidewalk at the edge of the parking lot of Dairy Treat. That's a fine walking surface. I wouldn't even, I'd stop it. It's early.
It's early. What I would, I would like to see, I'd like to see how we can work with both these well-established Victoria businesses.
And it may not be perfect for them. It may not be perfect for us. But there's got to be something in there to try and help them out and help us out with sidewalks on both sides of the road.
I'm just smiling because you're talking about the hill. And I mean, if, if you get to use your parking brake in this town, it's an exciting event. It's not exactly a hill.
Yeah. One of the things that we can do when we, as we move through the design phase is we can have urban engineers, they're doing that design, do parking space layout design for Dick's utilizing our eight-foot, you know, utilizing our right-of-way is we intend to use our, utilize our right-of-way, but go ahead and have them do a parking lot layout design.
Look, I didn't even realize those were straight spots. All the years I've driven by there, he might be able to angle them and meet all the needs and be done. That's fine.
We can easily.
There's some things, like there's a driveway right to the right of the screen here. And we talked about what if we slide that down, angle the parking, you may not lose that many. Gain a couple that are a little closer in that gap there and make it a conforming entrance further down.
And I appreciate the word conforming because the one nearest the intersection is a non-conforming driveway. So, but we can look at where a conforming driveway would be and then how we can design the parking lot layout.
And I was there with you, of course, in, in subsequent conversations. And while we were there, I suggested that you try a new parking lot layout. I don't believe his layout optimizes the land that he has available and that the engineer that's doing the street could probably do it, former, any decent traffic layout man could do that. I believe he would actually lose no spaces. I just did a sketch on a napkin and I thought I was doing, you know, and I'm not an engineer.
But I was, I was thankful he brought it to our attention early enough in the stage instead of when we're digging out there, so.
And also, I know, look all the way up and down the project-
Sure.
To see where other problems there might be.
I've asked Donald to already do that. I think we're in pretty good shape, relatively good shape. There may be another non-conforming driveway closer down your end. It, it may be yours.
I know which one you're talking about. It's not mine.
It's not yours? Okay.
That one right on the side of mine.
Okay, so it's not yours?
It's coming out of the pizza place.
Okay, I have one question.
Ma'am.
I know that if you're building a new building, you can't have two entrances in the same street. Would he be grandfather to where he can keep both entrances on both sides of the street? Because I think he has two in each.
Well, this, this driveway next to the intersection is non-conforming, so.
So he would have to close that?
What we're talking about doing, yes, is closing that during the design phase.
Okay.
But then what I just heard was we'll sit down as we do the design. I see Matt's back there is work on where a drive could be that would be conforming, then help design the layout for that parking lot there.
And that was one of the mysteries that, that we were wondering why that non-conforming driveway wasn't changed to one on Laurent. Why it wasn't changed when Laurent was repaved. That's been a number of years now. Seems to be a real mystery, but no one seems to know.
You and I were on council. I asked the same question of staff. And it's just, you know, yeah, I don't have an answer. But it is what it is at this point. It's still there.
Did they have two entrances on Laurent also, right? One right here and one further in?
Yes, and that, the one closest to the intersection is non-conforming.
Right there? Yeah.
Right.
This one is non-conforming.
I don't see any reason why we can't try to make it better and try to make it better for the citizens as well as the property owner. And if that means a change in a non-conforming driveway, then I think that's for the safety of everyone. There is a school in that corner, too.
It didn't get changed when y'all did Laurent, you know. I'm just saying.
Ms. Halise, it should have. It should have been, and you know, I wasn't the city manager nor was Donald the Public Works Director, and I can't give you an answer why, but it, it really should have been because it is dangerous there when you've got a non-conforming drive that close to an intersection.
And it's, it's not just that, it's not just dangerous for the intersection, but it's really kind of dangerous when your driveway goes straight into your front door. It's, it's a danger also.
Right.
But yeah, so I'm, I'm not sure why, but you know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate you three going over there and visiting with him. Okay, we're still into items from council. Are there anything else that y'all need to? I just want to reiterate one thing, you know, again, and I warned the city manager, I was going to say this. You know, our budgeting season's coming up. And, and I spoke a month or two ago about, you know, compensation, how we struggle with that and keeping good people. You know, you can have a rundown fire station or whatever, you know, fence chief. But if you have good people in there, they'll be the best fire department ever, you know. And it takes money to pay people. And I had brought up the idea months back about, you know, we need to take compensation and look at it in a longer-term view, create a fund, lined item, so that we don't struggle when we have a lean year, oh, we can't get raises, we don't have any money, you know, that kind of thing. So just keep thinking about that because I really want to make sure we can find a way to do something. It's a long-term vision, but when, when budget season comes up, I just want to keep planting it in y'all's minds. I think you guys all kind of agree here. I think we're in agreeance. We just have to wait, see what the details look like, so.
I just have one comment. We were in Oklahoma this weekend and I had not paid attention to the street signs. They have street signs that are that big. You can't even read them. So I just want to say, don't ever go to those little bitty signs.
Really?
There is a standard that we have to on street signs.
Yeah, but they have the regulars and then the ones that are replacing, they're replacing them with little bitty signs. It was hard to read. And they were purple. They weren't green. They were purple.
Yeah. It helps when you travel to see how other people-
You had to see other things, yeah.
Okay, any?
No purple signs.
Anything else from council?
Just not small ones, so you could be big.
We'll move, we'll go ahead and move into citizens communication. Anyone who would like to come visit about anything at all, come to the microphone. All we need is your name, don't need your address. And try to limit your comments to five minutes or less, out of respect for everyone else.
Hello. Probably two minutes here. My name is Judy Herman, and I am here to ask you to consider an ordinance for those that cannot ask for themselves. I'm asking you to consider those animals, usually dogs, that stand on our street corners with panhandlers. In the summer, the asphalt can be 125 when the temperature is only 77. You can fry an egg at 131 degrees. For those paws that hit the pavement, 120 degrees is initial pain threshold. 140 degrees is a permanent damage to their paws. And 150 is rapid burn with blisters. If you can't hold your hand to the pavement for 10 to 12 seconds, it's already too late for a dog or any animal out there. He will blister and burn. If you can't walk on pavement barefoot, how can you expect your dog to? In the winter, all animals are not created equal. Their coat color, size, weight, age, and health is a factor. Dogs feel wind chill, dampness, and cloud cover. Once the temperature reaches 20 degrees, dogs can develop hypothermia and frostbite. Probably not here, but anyway. Since there is no safe season to have a pet out in the elements, there is no reason to subject him to it. In concluding, I hope you will consider keeping our furry friend safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Herman.
Okay, thank you very much.
Donald Goldman. First of all, thank all of you for your service to the City of Victoria Council, city manager, and all the employees that work. It's a great place to, to live. I would encourage the council to leave Crestwood basically just like it is. It's been that way for a long, long time. If it is not broke, don't fix it. But, but all the utilities underground. I have a building on Laurent Street, and it was fun going through Laurent Street as well as Ronnie going through Dick's. I talked to him just a minute ago and he said that was, that was a big strain on Dick's when Laurent Street was built. But, you know, the proof is now that we can have a nice street. I improved my property to go along with what the city did. Anyway, I would encourage putting all utilities underground. Leave room for future development. You got to put a 12-inch pipe, 16-inch pipe, 24-inch pipe. Just put all that stuff underground. Keep the four-lane street like it is. Leave the sidewalks as they are. And with underground utilities, the holes left by the telephone poles can be filled in and still have not even messed with it. The money can be saved, if there is money to be saved, to me, by not creating an eight-foot sidewalk or bike trail, whatever it is, can be used in the park. That's where the gem is, in my opinion, City of Victoria, is old Victoria and the park. And take that money. And Crestwood is not anything to do with the park. And, but I wish the city would have had the capacity to issue bonds a couple of years ago to concrete all the major thoroughfares in Victoria when the money was cheap. But too late now. Anyway, that's about it. Yes, the entrance on Dick's is going to be interesting. I think that non-conforming entrance probably will do major damage to their business. And they were just recognized for three, for one of three businesses in Victoria to survive a long, long time. Once again, thank you for your service. And that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goldman. Citizens communication still open? If anyone else would like to speak?
May I say, I know there's people here and we've got resolutions down, so I don't know if there's any, I see John Wallace out there. This is the time, if anybody from D-TOR wants to speak about the well application, there's several wrecker companies here. Again, if you want to speak about the wreckers and your suggestions on what to do with, now's the time for you, for you to speak if you wish to. Because unless the mayor changes and, you know, it's process, it'll be, now's the time to speak.
I think they're just being shy.
Okay. I don't think Mr. Miller's shy.
Okay.
Okay. I'll get up and talk. I'm Alan Miller. The thing that the city council's had to deal with for years and years, as everybody say, is the city rotation. My dad started Allen Drekker in 1978. Went from one home-built truck to a fleet of 35, 32 trucks. We've got equipment from light-duty trucks to handle your passenger cars to everything from a 75-ton rotator crane that there's only maybe 10 to 20 in the state of Texas. We try to provide the City of Victoria with equipment that can handle any kind of situation. There's not always a need for it in Victoria, but we're here to provide it, that that's what it takes. We, we do our best to serve everybody. Everybody wants everything to be fair. We're a competitive business, just like everybody else. We, we depend on call volume to pay for our equipment that we have. Not rates increases. Our rates are across the board with everybody else in Victoria. But we do have to have call volume to support what we purchase and pay for. The best thing that, that I think is, there's always been a rotational list and it's pretty much always been the same ever since I can remember. And I've been riding around trucks since I was a kid. Then we've had a rotational list and basically you buy your spots from the city with however many trucks you want to put on or how many spots you think you can serve the city with. We're the type of company that if the police department calls us and we're, we're on calls or we have customer calls, that if we can't, if we can't make it to the city's ETA of 30 minutes that we have to abide for a light-duty rotation call, we'll tell the dispatch officer, ma'am, we don't have a truck available at the time, which is very few and far between. But we'll tell them that so that the city police officer's not sitting on the road waiting for a wrecker to show up that's not going to show up. And when the 30-minute time period goes by, then they have to call for another one, that the highway or the road's been blocked or the potential for another accident to happen. There, there's been several companies come and go. We've stayed here. We invest back in the community. We're one of the only wrecker services that gives back in the amount that what we do. Every year, we go to the livestock show to support our youth. We help out local fire departments with things that they may need, donations. We try to help everybody. There's, there's always people in need. We've been blessed that we've had a good, good business. I mean, the wrecker business is not a good business, but it, it is a business. And we try to take care of everybody that we can and as fair as possible. And just because one company says that they don't like the way another company is working, that it's not fair. Anybody has the opportunity to make something of themselves. Anybody can go out, any one of y'all up there could go out and buy a wrecker and y'all could get in the wrecker business if you want. You can start off with one truck. If you want to have your stand, have your standard at one truck, you can get employees on, you can buy more than one truck. And however many trucks you want to put yourself on a limb for and what you want to take that chance with is what you do. But one thing that I always think is, you can't win when you don't bet. We can, we can buy a bunch of trucks. We can put a bunch of stuff out there to serve the city and we could go belly up. Or we could try and do what we can do to serve the city and make it. And it's, it depends on how you run your business and what you do. It's, you can just be mediocre and make your way by, or you can try to strive and make yourself something. And that's, that's one thing my dad taught me. You just try. That's all I'd say.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Citizens communication still open?
Alan Miller from 2103 Dudley. I'm the old man. I'm the one that started it. I just wanted to take and say that whenever the chips are down and everything's bad in the City of Victoria, whether it be a crane turned over at the intersection of Zach Lance and Navarro Street, we have the equipment to get it and get it up and get it done quickly, so there's no secondary accidents. That equipment is very expensive. The equipment alone will not pay for itself in Victoria. It requires the revenue from the other equipment to be able to support it. I would ask that you council and the mayor and Sharmel to think of us as a fire department. Think of us as the ambulance. There's got to be a reason why nobody can respond to a accident call but a EMS unit. But the other ones can do other such calls, so that the city is guaranteed to get that revenue from that. The fire department is the same way. You have got to have the fire department there and to know that you've got the equipment at which to do it. And it's like we're almost a government. And it takes revenue to do it. And I want to tell you, and I'm going to make it short. I think Victoria is very fortunate to have a company of our capacity and our quality that will stand up with anyone from Houston all the way to the Rio Grande Valley, equipment-wise. You're not going to find more equipment. You're not going to find better-trained personnel. And you're sure not going to find more dedicated people. And I would thank y'all for letting me speak to y'all. And I thank each and one of y'all for the services that y'all render to the city. And let's see if we can make Victoria continue to grow and prosper. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Thank you.
Citizens communication still open? If anyone else would like to come up, talk about anything at all? Okay. Seeing no one, we'll go ahead and close citizens communication and move into, we do have one item with a public hearing, one ordinance.
Item C1 is an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2017-18 City of Victoria Water Waste Water Fund budget to provide $260,000 in additional funding for the Aqua for Storage and Recovery Demonstration Project, providing for savings and declaring an effective date.
Make a motion to approve item C1?
Oh, second.
I'm sorry. Do we need a public hearing?
We do. That's okay.
We can take the motion first.
Well, we'll go ahead. We've had a motion. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing. If you do want to speak specifically to C1 only, now would be the time if you're interested in our ASR project. Okay, seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing on C1. We do have a motion. A second. Are there any questions? I think we've all been, we discussed this before.
I have just a question. Okay, when I was reading it, the C1, did I understand that we are going to spend the $22,000 to get them to look at it? And then are we going to still spend the rest of the money or we're going to go on the recommendation from Mercer? Whether we're going to go in and do all this other stuff to the water well?
The, the $22,000 is just a contract-
The, the $22,000 is just a contract to remove the wellhouse, so that our well contractor can then get in to start the work. And then the first, I don't know if you have the handout in front of you from Weisinger, but the first four items on the Weisinger contract page, agreement page, total about $77,500. Those are the four items that we will have to do in order to determine what's going on with the well down hole. And then whatever the, whatever we find when we TV that, that well, that will determine whether we do any of these steps.
That continue?
Yeah, the rest of the steps.
Okay. I was just wondering, 'cause it seemed like that's what was gonna happen, so I just wanted to make sure what part we were gonna do for sure.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
It's coming from the general point into the. No, we're just changing, never mind. It's all, okay, we're just moving money around within your fund. Okay, I'm sorry.
It's all water money.
I thought you might be getting it from somewhere else, and if you didn't use it all, you'd have to give it back, but you'll still get to keep it.
Yeah, and it's all water money. You and I were saying, it's all water money.
Water money. Okay. Sorry. Any further questions?
This was a demonstration project to show that this is feasible. We did a feasibility study, said it should've worked. Now we need to go find out what went wrong, fix it, 'cause in the future, we're gonna need a bunch more of these. When you lose 90% to evaporation on a surface water holding bond, and you lose 10 to 20% on an ASR, we really need to follow this one through.
Well, I still think it's worthwhile. It's, providing water's something that we have to do. That's a key. It's a good thing. Hopefully, I'll be around when it's all done to see it work. Okay. No further questions? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same? Okay. We'll go into our consent agenda.
We have six items on the consent agenda that'll be approved by a single vote tonight. They are, first, the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of May 15, 2018. Second, a resolution appointing board, board members to the Victoria Health Facilities Development Corporation and declaring an effective date. Third, a resolution awarding the Hurricane Harvey Fence Removal and Replacement Project to Coastal Fence and Irrigation of Victoria, Texas, for their low bid of $39,220, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the project and declaring an effective date. The fourth is a resolution awarding Hurricane Harvey Gate Removal and Replacement Project to Quality Fence Company for their low bid of $28,930, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the project and declaring an effective date. The fifth is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an addendum to the annual maintenance contract with Physio Control Incorporated for the addition of 10 devices for a total contract price of $53,990.40 and declaring an effective date. And the sixth is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an interlocal agreement with Jackson County for their use of the city's, City of Victoria's public safety radio system to enhance the interoperability of radio communications for law enforcement and emergency purposes, and declaring an effective date.
I move second.
Motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. All items pass. E1.
E1 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to accept a grant from the Golden Crescent Regional Planning Commission in the amount of $8,590 for the purchase of two Big Belly Solar Compactors with no matching funds required from the city, and declaring an effective date.
I move second.
Motion, a second. Are there any questions? I have one. It's interesting to have a trash can with a battery in it, you know? 'Cause I saw these years ago and thought they were interesting, but, Ken, you're gonna put one downtown, I noticed.
Yes, sir.
Can they be hardwired into our, since we have that nice electrical distribution around the plaza?
Well.
To where you don't have to worry about them?
They're solar, so we could, we could look at doing that, but the goal behind this is to be able to relocate them to places as we need them. So if we've, let's say we've got Boot Fest going on, we can take the one that we're gonna put out at the youth park, bring it downtown. We've got a big tournament, we can take the one from downtown and move it out to the youth sports complex. We could move them to Riverside Park. We could move them, I mean, just, the possibilities are endless.
You're, you're right, and I'm not thinking about, you know, I'm thinking about plugging it in. I realize it's solar, and that's the whole point. I just kind of assume sometimes that that's a great idea, but it doesn't always practicality work out. You know, it may fill up before it has enough energy to squash the trash, but.
And, and there are, there are some of these that you can purchase that are, you know, I know that these are used on college campuses all across Texas. Texas A&amp;M has a bunch, as well as Rice and a couple of others. So, I mean, they seem to be working great for those folks, and, and this is kinda, you know, this is kind of a jumping-off point for us. If these things tend to work, you know, we may come back and try and get some of these to put in all of our city parks.
This is no local money.
Not, it's not costing the city anything other than the time that we spent putting the grant together.
And, and compared to a regular can, how many times less do we have to send someone out to empty it? It may be in here, I didn't see it.
We will find that out, but they say that it could be two to three times less. You know, these things, we'll be able to adjust the packing pressure and different things to make them work for us. But the goal here is that we'll capture those recyclables, and instead of having to just naturally send people by on a regular schedule, we'll be able to schedule it based off of what the actual usage is, not having to go check.
That's right, 'cause it calls in and lets you know when it's full.
It will send us an email and let us know that it's getting full, so that we can schedule the pickup.
I know people that don't like to send email. Now we have trash cans sending emails, so. I sit around waiting for an email from a trash can.
We get plenty of them in our departments every day.
And I did mention that there's no local money here, right?
Right, right.
What stops someone else from relocating it besides the city?
You know, well, I'd like to hope we don't have to worry about that, but we can look at a way to, to time down if we need to. You know, we can put them next to a light post or something, but be honest with you, that's not something I really hope that we have to deal with.
We generally don't have people wanting our trash.
It's just a pretty fancy device.
I do think it's something we're gonna have to.
Is there a law against kidnapping a garbage can?
We're gonna have to take care of that and make sure it is attached.
I'm sure we could.
It will sprout legs.
Yeah, we can chain it down in some way, shape or form.
Can it phone home to say where it is? Can it phone home to say where it is?
I don't know that it can do that.
Put a home-end device on it.
It might.
Might have a tracking.
A tracking device of some sort.
It's gonna connect to some Wi-Fi, you never know.
Daryl, since you're up there, I know that when I go to the meetings for the Golden Crescent, they have always said they've had money for recycle. Was this part of that grant?
This is part of that grant. This money directly comes from tipping fees paid at our Victoria landfill.
Okay, yes. Okay, that's what it was.
Yeah, we've tried for this grant before, I think, haven't we, Daryl?
We looked at doing this grant, you know, we originally looked at doing this grant for garbage, and so we had to come back and revamp and look at it on a recycling and make sure it would work for us in that way. And, you know, there's not many manufacturers out there, so, of these types of machines. But this is the second time we've looked at, at getting these.
Okay. Nothing else? We do have a motion, right? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. You've got your, your big-belly trash cans. Number, number two.
E2 is a resolution revising the allocation of funding to Film Exchange, formerly known as the Victoria, Texas Independent Film Festival, from the 2017-18 Hotel Occupancy Tax Funds, authorizing the city manager to execute a funding agreement with said agency and declaring an effective date.
I move to adopt E2.
Second.
Okay, we have motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Got it all squared away, Mr. Attorney?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Thank you. E3.
E3 is a resolution approving the purchase of instant notification equipment from Secure Tech Systems Incorporated in the amount of $32,095, authorizing the city manager to execute all documentation necessary to complete the purchase and declaring an effective date.
I move second.
Okay, questions?
How does this work?
Yeah.
Thank you.
When installed, there'll be both hard-line activation buttons and also virtual buttons that placed at various locations within city departments, and the alert goes out via radio to our, directly on our radio channel, and it, it's a message that alerts us directly that, to respond to a specific location.
Within the, the City of Victoria departments?
Yes.
Is this something?
So if something were to happen here at courthouse, at municipal court, we would get an instant notification directly over our radio that would cut down on all of the, the time it takes for an employee to pick up the phone, dial 911, and go through all that. It will go directly to us to quicken our response.
Is this a system that, in our local agreement, could be done with school district? Where there'd be one at each campus?
There's definitely an application for, for that to be done with the school districts themselves. They probably operate independently of, of ours, but, but yes, I, I know that the county also has this system in place right now in their, in their courthouse. So, but yeah, there's an application for, certainly for school districts as well to have the same type of system.
They don't, well, you know, a lot of times, these kind of things, we don't discuss publicly how they, but, yeah, that's a good discussion, maybe. 'Cause it would phone here, ultimately, whatever they do, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's just, it's to call 911.
Yeah.
Sounds like a good idea.
Faster.
It eliminates that downtime, just to, even though it doesn't take a whole great deal of time to call 911, but it eliminates that, and we would get the notification immediately.
With the location, so it eliminates not only the phone call, but all the follow-up with it?
Yes, ma'am.
Interesting.
It can als, it can also be done through the computer.
Yes.
And I'm guessing if you're in the computer, you select, it says you can do 100 different types of notifications, but how do you, you just choose one for that one button, I suppose?
Well, there, there's a, a number of different ways they, they can hit that particular notification to be sent, like, we need, you know, assistance here regarding whatever, and then that message would be relayed directly over the radio to us. So, yes.
And maybe by the time your people arrive, they may have more details, but this gets them on the way.
Yes.
Okay, I see. That's interesting. Any further questions? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay.
E4 is a resolution approving a private water well permit under Section 13-60 of the Victoria City Code to allow for the construction of a water well to serve as an emergency backup water supply for the D-TAR Healthcare System located at 506 North Navarro Street, owned by Victoria Hospital LLC, and declaring an effective date.
I move second.
Motion, a second. Any questions for Donald?
I have an amendment that I would like to offer to this. And I don't know how to do it in the full resolution, Thomas, but in the short resol, resolution, topic of council item, I would strike the D-TAR Healthcare System Hospital located at 506 North Navarro Street, owned by Victoria Hospital LLC, and insert licensed nursing homes, assisted living facilities, and hospitals.
Mr. Baldwin, I think that the code section that this approval is operating under requires that a specific individual apply for this kind of permit. This is not a variance or a change to our ordinance. This is a, an approval of a specific application.
We have a variance application, though.
It is, it's titled a variance application. I agree with you on that. However, what the code actually says is, if an individual within the city wants a private water well, they submit an application to Mr. Reese on that form that you're describing, and then that application has to be approved by council. And so expanding this beyond the applicant currently in front of us really would serve no practical purpose.
I also think you have to look at each individual piece of property to determine the ability to, to drill a well. And I know Citizens Medical Center had talked to us a few months ago about that, and we, we, I spoke to Mr. Olson again today. His facilities manager is supposed to get in touch with Mr. Reese and talk, you know, hiring an engineer to look at what needs to be done for citizens' property.
There were probably more residents in nursing homes and assisted living that were affected by no water than the hospitals. Population was greater in those.
This is for cooling only, though?
No. It's been able to flush.
What it says, for cooling only?
This, this application is for cooling only. That's correct. It is not for potable water. It's purely, they want the ability to operate their chillers, so.
And I would like to see it go further.
And let me jump in there. When you, when you start tying a non-potable system into something that uses potable water, you're creating some other issues. So, there's, there's some different, that's why I really think that, that each individual facility that would like to look at this needs to send an application with exactly what they want to do, so that we can look at it and, and take it under consideration.
I can appreciate that.
I was under the impression they didn't want to use it as potable water. It was only for cooling, if I'm mistaken, by all means.
I think that's in the, the actual resolution write-up that talks about that.
Okay.
You're right.
I just wanted to make sure.
I would like to see it would've made a big difference, and it may never happen again, but it would make a big difference if they had that ability where toilets could be flushed and.
Well, they're requesting it, and it makes sense. They don't want it as potable water. I would assume they'd have to come up with a quality that they are not prepared to pay for, and that could be huge, but it could be used for cooling.
Yeah. Okay. I'm okay with it.
Well, I, I mean, I want to overlay the fact that the groundwater district should have something to say about this as well, and, I mean, you're sort of going down a road with all sorts of wells, and I know we're not talking about that right now, but this is not freestanding, that, this doesn't override the groundwater district, does it?
No, it's a, it's a, kind of a dual jurisdiction. You know, it's gonna take both of us to approve it before it's allowed.
They, they would be required to have a groundwater.
Yeah, yeah. And, and so, if this is approved, the groundwater district already has a, has this on their agenda for the 15th, I believe.
I see.
So, they're kind of gonna look what we do and then make their own decision after that.
I mean, if I, you know, I had a concern originally about the number of people that might approach us for this, but councils in the future will have to defend these type of decisions. You know, the hospitals is strategic. It's a, in a major disaster, those two hospitals are critical infrastructure, and, and I use the word strategic. I think the city manager called it critical, but whatever. Some of the other businesses in town, like the rest homes, need to also consider the countermeasures we've taken to try to ensure it doesn't happen again. Hopefully, that'll help. You know, D-TAR Hospital's a big enough entity to bear the expense of having this comfort for themselves. Some of the smaller's may not, you know, I think, may not want to go to the expense and trouble of permitting a well. They're a pretty big entity, so, but, you know, we'll probably face this in the future when someone says, hey, I want one too. You know, I mean, there, there are a couple of wells, I think, still running at a few golf courses in town, and when they break, they're kaput, that's it, but they're grandfathered. Generally speaking, it's not a good idea to let everybody start poking holes in the ground, 'cause we're responsible for providing water to a lot of people, and we have to protect that for everybody. But this is different. Anyway, I just wanted to.
One, one of the keys the groundwater conservation district has always been trying to monitor is the usage of all wells, so they could see how it affects aquifer under various hydrologic conditions, from wet seasons to dry seasons and everything in between. The more data they got, the more accurate their model is, and can then come closer and more accurate to predicting what would be available under various circumstances. As long as this thing has a meter on it, that even though it's only used for cooling, and assumably, they would use it to flex it, exercise it, to make sure it would work in case it needed to work, like we intend to do with our generators. I don't see that there's really a negative side. It's only used for cooling. I, I think to get it past that would take a lot more work and a lot more money than they're willing to do.
To that end, it may say it in here, but it just occurred to me, under what circumstances are they allowed to use it?
They're allowed to use it when there is no water supply for them to run to their chillers, to their cooling towers, for example.
When our supply is not available? I mean, is that codified in here? Or they just start using a free source, their own source of water?
Part of this permit.
No, it's part of the permit is, is that they can only use it during emergency operations when we don't, we cannot provide them.
Okay.
It's also metered, and so we will know if they're using that well when they're not supposed to be using that well.
Okay. Just to be fair to everybody.
One of the reasons it's metered.
Okay. I thought the metering was because of the county, the groundwater district required that.
Helps us know when, yeah.
Okay.
Well, there is no taxpayer money used on this either. This is all private money.
It's all private money, yes, sir.
Where, where's that say it in the application?
The final recital paragraph, the last, whereas it's being requested to provide emergency backup water supply.
Okay. I mean, I trust them. I don't think they're trying to.
Why, do you want to clarify that and add that additional sentence in there?
That additional sentence being what exactly, what would it be?
It would be.
When, when our system's unavailable, however you say that.
Subparagraph one C that, it, it, to add an additional condition. So that the additional condition would be that the private water well is used only in circumstances when city water is unavailable.
Municipal system is, is off.
The first paragraph of the applicant's letter, uh, the first paragraph of the second page says the proposed well, water well will have a flow of fifty gallons per minute, be approximately two twenty feet deep. The well will be used for emergency use on a cooling tower. The well will be tested each month and this is, uh, for maintenance.
Yeah, I read that part, but I just wouldn't.
So you're saying that you wanted to find what emergency use is, meaning we don't have water available?
And again, I don't think there, there's no ill intent, I'm just thinking years down the road, somebody says, hey, why don't we just use this and save some money? You know, that's not fair to citizens, so.
So can we do an amendment to it right now? And add one C to it?
Yes ma'am, I'm currently, give me one more second to draft some language here.
Okay.
All right. I would entertain a motion then to amend this resolution to add paragraph one C to read, the approved well would be only used when the city water supply is unavailable. The effect of that motion would be to make the approval of this, uh, water well contingent upon them only using it when the city, uh, water is unavailable. And if they were to use it at a time when city water is available, this approval would be rescinded automatically.
Donald, did you have something?
Yeah, it, it may be wise to have, I think there's a representative from, uh, both urban and from, uh, uh, DTAR Hospital here and make sure that that meets intent of what they're wanting to do before.
Come on up.
He does.
I was going to say, that's what you've been telling us.
And I, I did not mean to throw a wrench in the works here either. Will.
Just, just make sure it will be tested every month.
Yeah.
And by turning the city's water off and then seeing if the float switch works on the well, the well will be turned off electrically, it won't be doing anything. Flip the switch on the well and see if the float switch works, and when that happens, go back to city water.
All right.
And, and the, the, uh, meter was requested by the city and we certainly agree with that and electronically monitor anything going on, so.
Okay.
You got it.
And, and I, I appreciate that a lot, Ms. Schmidt, and you know, we just, six, eight years from now, different people around and it's suddenly piped into the sprinkler system, we, we wouldn't want that. And I certainly don't think y'all would, but sometimes things happen down the road and so that's the only reason.
One of the advantages of your, your meter reading system is that.
Okay.
You can, you can put an alarm, an alert on there if it goes over any amount you pick. And, and some of these other places, Jeff, I, you know better than I do, but some of them don't have cooling towers and.
No.
Water doesn't help, and like, like, what's your name? Donald. Like Donald said, when you switch over to potable water, now you're talking about public water supply rules and it's real complicated and all those things were considered in, in our dealings with DTAR in, in our internal workings and came down to, no, we need to simplify this because the biggest problem when the city's water ran out was temperature of the, the air conditioning system. They can bring in bottled water.
Uh, Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
What's the depth of this well?
Two twenty.
Two twenty? Evangeline and Chico, we're at five fifty, six fifty?
We can get all the water we need right there.
No, what I'm saying is the city wells are all screened.
Oh, oh yeah, they're.
Double screened at Evangeline and Chico aquifers.
Right.
Which is part of the Gulf Coast Aquifer.
Right.
This isn't even close to what the city's even on.
Close to city water, no.
Not even the same aquifer.
Mayor and council, in order to further clarify the fact that the wells, that the well would be used for this testing, which we do require them to do in one B, I would entertain a motion that further adds paragraph one C to read, other than the testing as described in paragraph one B, the approved well would be used only when city water supply is unavailable. Mr. Schmidt, would that meet the needs of the applicant?
Sure.
One of y'all.
Emergency water supply doesn't say the same thing?
Make the motion to amend it as presented by Mr. Goush.
Second.
Okay, so, we're good. All right, thank you, sir. So we have a motion as second to amend the ordinance as described. Any discussion on that motion to amend? I think we already had it, all those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, now we're back to the original motion, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay, ayes have it, there you go. Thank, thanks for indulging that conversation there. Okay, we have a couple city manager reports now.
We have three, so we have the tow truck back up again tonight for, uh, conversation. Mr. Bailey, who I see back to the left and, uh, Mr. Oberhaus and Mr. Schmidt came to see me after the last council meeting. For, they would like the council to reconsider that instead of doing the rotation, uh, the slots per truck as it currently is under the rotation, they'd like for it it to be one permit, one location. So, I, I told Mr. Bailey, I don't know if anybody else is here, uh, but that I would visit with council. There's several options we can do. You know, we can just stay the course, leave it like it is right now. Currently, uh, the process of renewing rotation list, uh, is in the process for a July one date. Council, we can extend, uh, the current rotation and us go back to the drawing board and work on this ordinance some more. One idea that came up from the mayor several months ago was maybe it's time for us to look at bidding out the rotation list and, um, looking at that process and, uh, I can say, I know you all get information from the towing companies and as Mr. Miller said, it's a very competitive, um, market. So, and I think I've used the word, uh, Mr. Bailey, we seem, it, there seems to be a lot of telling on each other when they're not doing things right. So, maybe the concept of looking at doing a bid process and a con- a contract simplifies the process for the city. The purpose of the tow truck rotation is so that when we do have an accident on the street, our police officers can quickly call somebody out, clear the scene, hopefully within thirty minutes or somebody's on scene within thirty minutes. So it's a service to get our roads back up and running and that's why it's called a non-consent tow. And that's the purpose of the rotation, which dispatchers have to go down that rotation list, see who's, um, been called and then move on, so, um, you know, my, I'm back to the same recommendation that we stay the course with the current rotation list, but I'm asking council for consideration, maybe we do explore the options. Mr. Goush and I have been talking about that. Probability of looking at maybe contracting out, spend the next several months doing that, get a bid document ready to go and then by the time the rotation list is up next year, we'll be ready to move in that direction. And I'm hitting you cold with that, so.
So, it would be not the lowest bid wins, it's, there's lowest bid wins?
Well, no, we would have to.
Highest bid.
We would, we would have to set those standards and that's something we'd have to work on. I, we've not even talked about how to develop the bid specs. Some cities do have one company that provides the service for the non-consent toes.
That, and then there's the option of leaving it like it is.
Mm-hmm.
If you want to be on the rotation list, buy ten spots, five spots, one spot, or tie it to, uh, number of licensed drivers.
Yes, you can do that.
Any other options I'm thinking of?
Well, they're, uh, now, Mr. Bailey, uh, is asking for a one permit per location. So that would, you, you would, I'm sorry.
Per business.
Permit, so.
I mean, we're, we're a small enough town that we could also do more or less as it is, but a maximum number. Something like that, because, I mean, I don't know how many times a day.
About fourteen?
Fourteen, uh, it's, it's one of the high.
So, I mean, that, that's still, even if we went with a maximum number per location, that, that levels the playing field for the smaller companies, that hurts the bigger companies and.
Did you say average of fourteen a day?
There's some days that they have fourteen callouts.
Yeah, I didn't realize it was that high either.
I, I have a question though, if, if you, the, the bidding, and I know it's not really envisioned yet, but you're envisioning an exclusive, are you envisioning having more than one company in the, you know, with approval of the bid?
I can tell you Thomas and I aren't envisioning anything yet, it's the concept. That, uh, that, you know, it is probable that you could do a bid process and award a bid to one company, two companies, or, you know, however you want to do. I mean, we, we've not, we've just started, my question to Thomas, can we legally do that, you know? And it's, yes, we can, some cities do it.
I've talked with several cities and several city attorneys who have overseen projects like this, who have gone out for proposals on these kind of projects. And it's, uh, I've talked with cities that are satisfied with that. I've talked to cities who used it for a while and went back to a rotation list. It's another way of doing business and it, it does provide the city what the city needs, which as Ms. Garrett says, is a contractor to come in and clear the scene so that the police officer can get back to doing other things.
I have been around long enough, uh, you know, and I, I used to laugh when people would say that, that what I can say, and, um, no offense to my record buddies out here, it, whatever we come up with, doesn't seem to satisfy the whole group. It, it's always been that way, I mean, you know, it's a very, like Mr. Allen said, it's a very, Mr. Miller said, it's a very competitive business. But we, I know Thomas has dealt with this through the years, um, you know, I've recently dealt with it. We worked on a new ordinance last year, it was sent to all the record companies for their review, their comments back, uh, you know, then a few months, months later, then we're back commenting on it again. So, um, but, and normally, you know, my job is to bring you solutions to problems. And, uh, so, uh, and again, you're hearing this cold, the ordinance does not allow any latitude in either extending the current rotation list and let it run for a few more months to, we can relook at this again, there's a shall in there, so if any, if we're going to do anything with the rotation list, it has got to come back to council for approval. So, and my purpose last week and then again this week is to see, you know, what your attitude is about it, so.
I don't know if you know the answer to this, but how many record companies do we have in town and how many slots are on the rotation?
April knows off the top of her head.
There, there's currently seven companies on our rotation list, now there is an additional company that used to, that used to be on the list, they just chose not to this year, so I don't know if they're only doing toes for, you know, for themselves or for their, um, their business, because they have a auto repair business, so they may just be towing for that. There is another company, um, that kind of comes in, but they don't, aren't required to get our permit because they don't have a location in Victoria. And that's, the, the ordinance specifically says that, so currently we're really only dealing with seven companies.
But that, that company that comes in is only consent toes, they are not doing non-consent toes. It's seven companies on our non-consent tow rotation, right?
How many rotation slots do we currently have out there?
Currently, we have, um, fifty, fifty-six on the small rotation truck list. Now it's going to encompass forty, uh, forty-seven regular sized trucks and then the nine big trucks that can also tow off of that list. And then we have a heavy duty truck or a big trucks, and there's nine trucks currently on that list. That rotation list currently only goes through the end of June.
So, so the rotation lists are separate, I mean, if you, if you get to an accident requires a large truck, but that company's not on the, it's a different rotation list.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that's.
And the, uh, the officer is, is tasked with the duty of deciding.
Yeah.
What size truck they do.
Okay, you said something was, uh, expiring on June the thirtieth, so do we need to do an extension or?
Well, the current ordinance as it is today, uh, they're, they've done, their applications are due in by June one and most of them have submitted theirs and it goes into effect July one. So, um, so if council wishes to change anything, we'll, we'll need to bring ordinance amendments back to change it. So, as it stands right now, the current ordinance that's in place that allows you to buy, you know, to register your truck, and there's not a limit on how many trucks you can register on the rotation.
Is there any check and balance of whether the truck works? I guess that's one of the arguments or.
Well, that's, that's what you're being told, isn't it?
It's what you're being told, okay.
No, that's what you're being told, uh, the check, you know, they, uh, April, I believe you get a state list of.
We do, the, I mean, we reserve the right even when, we used to always inspect every year and last July when we changed it, we reserved the right to still inspect, but we didn't require it every time. But the state does, you know, does hold a, a right to go and inspect it anytime as well, they have to pay insurance, they have to pay, you know, so, it's costly.
Recently, I think you had one truck that, um, no longer was insured.
Well, we, well, we had one, uh, a report of one truck that had lost their state licensing. So we did pull them off rotation until they could come back and prove that they had then paid their, and the reason they had failed to pay their registration to the state was because it wasn't working. So they didn't want to pay their fees either because it wasn't working, so they.
So you have some companies that are investing to be larger companies and some companies that are either by design or, or by some other means are smaller companies and they're all, on their more or less pro rata. No more or less about it.
So, um, you know, I've been coming down here a long time, even before I was sitting up here, I was sitting out there and this has been an issue, I remember in the nineties and I remember Mr. Allen being here. He hadn't changed a bit, he still looked the same, like he haven't aged, by the way. But, uh, it's a problem, you know, the, the city, everybody, I, I, that's what I always tell the city manager, everybody's a customer and everybody's an owner and we're always stuck in the middle. It's the same with the sign ordinance. People think we've got people driving around harassing companies on their signs, no, we don't. It's other companies turning in other companies. It's the same, I'm sorry, with the wreckers and we're stuck in the middle. Sometimes we're made to look like the bad guy and it's frustrating. It's an honor system, you know, the wreckers, you guys, you, you go, follow the rules and, you know, that's great and business is great, but I know you've been through a lot communicating with a bunch of them, you know, and, and that's fine, but one of the seven of us has to bring this up if you want to change it. You know, Ms. Garrett's not the one to recommend, she can recommend stuff to us, but if one of you wants to make a change, you know, I would just encourage you all to go think about it and ponder it. My idea was about the bidding is, you know, let's get this, this hassle and this bickering off our back. If, if they want to bid three, one company says, we'll, we'll share three bucks per tow with you. So if we use them a hundred times a month, they pay us three hundred dollars because we called them. If another company wants to say, I'll give you three fifty, that's the bidding idea I had. That's it, just simplify it down. Now, if a little company with one, one truck gets that bid, they got a problem. Well, then they got to turn around and they go work with another company to sub, you know, or share or something else. That's their problem, again, not ours. It's not something that we constantly have this bickering in the background going on. So, that's just my, that was my thoughts on the bidding, does that make sense? I, I don't know, maybe it wouldn't work, I don't know, I'm just saying.
I had some concerns about it just because you would need to set minimum standards for a company, I think, to allow them to bid. And we're going to have to, at least now they, they have a chance, if you have one truck and you want to get in the rotation.
True.
If you have one truck, you're not going to have an opportunity to bid because you cannot service fourteen in one day.
Right, well, you would have to turn around and make an agreement with another company.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's why.
And there might be other issues involved in that, but, I don't know, it's something to think about.
And then you also have to think.
We can tinker with this all you want, but there's a downside to any move we make. Maybe we should just look at what is giving us what we want is to help people out when they are not able to, this is non-consent. If they want to choose a different record company and they're able to, but you're hitting people when they're down, they're hurt, non-consent means they do not have the facilities at that point to make that decision, either by the trauma or perhaps injury. We need a system that takes care of that. Let's look at that as our goal first off.
The number of drivers one was an interesting one too, you know, I mean, I know had, that had been brought up at one point. You know, you can have fifty-six records, but if you only got seven drivers, you don't have ghosts driving the others, you know, you got seven in the rotation list. Maybe that, maybe that's something to discuss, but does that, that offer a whole nother problem of verifying their drivers and all that and, you know.
I was thinking about that argument when, when the gentleman was talking about having larger equipment. And, and you know, I was sitting there thinking, well, it's unreasonable to say, well, you have to have a driver for every piece of equipment when some of his equipment is large equipment that's only called out at certain. equipment that's only called out at certain times. So I was seeing a problem with the, using that as the, as the measure.
Yeah. What does the sheriff's office do? Does anybody know what they do out in the county?
They don't have a rotation list like we do, so I'm not sure.
Uh-oh. Really?
From what I've been told from the record companies is they pretty much just, they check with, with our dispatch and see who, which companies are available, and then they just go down a list. They don't have, you know, a certain number of spots. I've been told that it's just, everybody's on that list and they keep going, like a one, almost like a one company, each company gets one spot. Now, whether that's true, I don't know.
They also don't regulate the fees either.
No.
They probably use our rotation list artificially, just through, by the fact, the way it works. They probably just call and, okay, well.
On our list, like, if somebody has 10 slots, are they 10 calls in a row?
We actually do a draw. So I take every single truck, put them into a hat, and we pull them out, and it's a random draw, and that's the order that they get into. So make it fair for everyone.
Now, they don't have to go through all this, but we do.
I like the way it is, especially with all this detail.
No, I, I'm sorry, I was back to the county. How, how can they not worry about it and not have a problem, but we have such a problem? It's interesting to me, I don't know. Well, I would, if I may, just as, y'all, we all think about it. You heard it, somebody wants to bring something up, we will. What do y'all think? To be continued or not? Okay.
My recommendation right now is just to leave it as it is, and then.
I don't think there's enough time before the end of June to get anything done.
No, we would have to, I would have, if y'all want some changes done, I would say then you come back, do an amendment to the ordinance that allows the current rotation to be extended for so many months and not start that new rotation that starts July 1. That's, and, you know, don't forget too, I had three of our employees look at it, and there's some minor things that need to change in the current, but not anything worth, right now, you know, making some major changes. But it's just a matter of the concept is, you know, it, it's almost a free market as long as they meet the standards and are willing to pay the fee to put a truck on there, then that's what's going on, so. But it, but it, okay, yep, the mayor's telling me to move on. So, I, I'm not going to mind real well. So, but is it, can I get a kind of a, okay, to, for Thomas and I to look at possibly what looking at doing a bid process would look like, and then maybe bring that concept back, fleshed out a little bit more, or is it totally nah, DOA?
I would go with DOA.
Okay.
Because if you have somebody that's already tried it and went back to rotation, I think it's not going to work. I have my reservations about that.
Okay.
Okay.
That's fine. I know, I think Mr. Del Garza was fixing to say something.
I'd like more time to review the ordinance, but I think we need to stay with the rotation instead of a bid process. We need to share the wealth.
Okay. That's good. We'll stay the course.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you for that conversation. So that, so the next is Donald. Had to kind of regroup and get my eyes back on it. The master plan for the water and wastewater update, and I know Matt and Tom both are here who worked on that, Matt did?
Yeah, actually, Matt's going to come up and give the report. I'm just want to give a few opening remarks. As you know, it's been quite a while since we've updated our water and wastewater master plan. The last time it was updated was in 2009. We really want, like to do those about every five years, so we're way behind on this. This process, Matt and his team at Urban have been outstanding at putting this together. This is a lot of data to go through, and, you know, what this, what these, these updates do is look at the city's pumping capacity, look at our storage, look at our distribution and our collection system, and our treatment capacity to make sure that we're not only meeting all the demands of our citizens, but also meeting our requirements with TCEQ. So with that being said, I'm going to turn this over to Matt and let him go over these. I think he's going to start with the wastewater master plan, is that correct, Matt?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Mayor, council, thank y'all. I'm going to start with the master wastewater plan, if I can figure out the working mouse here. Okay, it didn't like it up there. And I think I'm briefly going to just go through and show you the exhibits and explain about how we went through the process, and then we'll go through and, and kind of tell you our recommendations where we're at. This is, like Donald says, the update of 2009 master water, master wastewater plan. Okay, we're moving. I'm going to start with our first exhibit, and it shows, it shows the cities. So they can see the whole thing. It, it's, y'all have a copy, I believe.
We have our map.
So I'll just give you a brief overview. It shows all the major mains in town. I think it's everything over 12 inches that we showed, the system and kind of how they connect and, and move together from, from lift station to lift station to the wastewater treatment plants. Move to second, to the second map. And this is actually all the lift stations, and it shows their flow areas. So as you can see, this light blue area is all served by the Spring Creek Lift Station. This green color is Highway 77 Lift Station. And I'm going to go one more map, then I'm going to go to the, probably the most important part of the whole study is a chart that explains it I'm passing right now. But I think it's important to see the chart, the map first, and then, this is a map showing what we're predicting is the growth areas, areas outside of town that are not currently served, but we anticipated how we would serve those as the city grows. I'm going to go back to our map, back to our chart, and it's going to be a little hard to read because of the zoom, but if you look at the top, you'll see, we estimated the current population to be 67,000, 670, I think that's a few years old, but that's, we estimate the flows based off of that. Pretty much counted each lift station area and number of houses in the area, and the state recommends 100 gallons per person per day. I think based on treated flows, it's about 98 is your average flow, so we use that, we just ran it up to 100 and use 100 gallons per person per day. And then estimated a four times peak for infiltration and inflow, and utilized what's in the comprehensive plan of the 2.62 people per household to get an average, to get our peak flow of 1,048 gallons a minute, or gallons per day per system. And basically, if you look at this chart, this is all your lift stations on this chart, and it'll show you that all of the lift stations are currently within capacity, and that they, everything with the exception of the 175 lift station has a capacity, has capacity through the 84,400 people. That's the approximate 2040 population in the comprehensive plan. But we do it on population, so it's a trackable number, not a date range. And then you'll look at the far right columns is, what you'll see is the additional growth in the ultimate growth areas and what those flows are, and where you see the red numbers are the ones that exceed the capacity. We, we basically filled up the growth area with people, and that's based on the suffering usage of, of how many people per acre we project, and that's what you see in there. In addition, we also looked at some mains in town that we, we considered critical mains that we may or may not exceed flow on, and you'll see those also. In that, we'll move on to the end in our recommendations, is that everything with the exception of the 175 lift station in the Stockbauer main meet the 122,000 people. So what I'm saying is your system's in good condition. When, in our recommendations, we recommend that the Stockbauer main be expanded in size, more likely pipe bursted, but as the time goes, technology may be changing. And our current recommendation is just a pipe burst that may up to a 48-inch line from the, from the regional wastewater treatment plant up to the, the Stockbauer, I mean, up to Highway 59 and Stockbauer intersection, and then from there, we would do a 42-inch main up to Moggan Burn. The other thing that we talked about doing in this report is checking for inflow and infiltration and reducing that, and looking at ways to reduce that peak. So upgrading lines, replacing old clay lines and concrete lines that have issues and manholes and leaks, if we can reduce that number from a four times peak down to a smaller peak, then your system under its current, current conditions will extend your growth further. Yes, ma'am.
One of them, you said you have 2.62 persons per residence?
That was per, that was per the comprehensive plan of the average people per household.
My house is not average.
Yes, ma'am. Well, there's, there's, there's lots of ones, there's lots of twos, and then there's, there's more than that.
I'm way over there. If we go in there and we do, through our CIP list, and we go in there and redo some of these lines, I'm talking about the wastewater lines, are these figures that are in the red, are they still going to be red once you do that, or with your recommendations, they will turn from red to black?
You're talking about doing system improvements. These are just the major mains, just collection portions of the major mains. So system improvements throughout there can reduce that flow. These flows are estimated, and something else that's part of the report, if you look in the recommendations, is, is putting in some flow meters at some conditions at some time in the future and analyzing what's the actual flow in these lines. These are all based on estimates of the, of the state recommendation.
But it will help?
It will help, yes, ma'am. We've seen it in the downtown projects. I know that, that it's reduced, reduced the flow in, in a lot of those mains downtown just by replacing all those lines.
Right.
Inflowing clay pipes and, and some storm sewer making or some, some draining into the manholes. Any other questions? I'm going to move on to water, it's a little more. Okay, this is the master water plan, and it's also an update of a 2009 water plan. In the water plan, we looked at it in a couple different ways. To start with, that we, we have two requirements in the water plan. We have to meet the state requirements, and we also have to meet the, be able to pump water to everybody and maintain pressure and flow for everyone. So the first thing we did, I'm going to just go through our exhibits again, like, and then I'll explain how we went through the process. As you can see in table 2.1, that's, that's an inventory of your existing system. It shows water treatment, ground storage, the amount of elevated storage and your pumping, and your available pumping in the different zones.
For our reference, it would be very good if we had addresses of those facilities. Meantime, I can't tell you which is four and which is five.
Yes, sir. Well, we actually have a map.
For the general public's consumption, I think it'd be a good idea, just a passing comment.
Yes, sir. Well, I'll start with, I'm, the first map is just showing the city limits, and what we show then is that this red line at the top of the page is basically the extent of what you can serve based on the elevation of the north zone. The south zone, of course, typically flows downhill from there, and then there's no limit to that flow other than pumping in capacity. We're going to move to the next map, and this is for you, Mr. Halpaska. This is a, a map showing the existing major mains. It also has all your water towers on it and your treatment plant.
And the Morse code lines indicate?
Indicate proposed upgrades. The dash lines are upgrades and recommendations, so as.
Of the, of the plane lines?
Yes, sir. Plane lines are existing, here's a legend up here in the corner. So with the water system, one of the main components was to check for TCEQ regulations, but the other component we did is we prepared, prepared a new water model. In the previous reports, we had the older software, and we, we upgraded the software and utilized some of your, some of your system upgrades in our, in preparing our model. So we used the GIS system and imported all your lines as, as, as current as the GIS system at the time, and also updated for some construction projects that were ongoing during, during, during our study. We were also, also allowed to take in all the water meters or imported into their exact location with the, with their number on them, and that allowed us to take the AMR data and import it into that location also. So you're actually seeing a flow, when we run the model, you're seeing a flow for that house or for that meter in that location. And we took that from the 20, from the peak day. I think the day we had was August the 10th of 2016, our pumping was 16,695 gallons, 16.695 MGD, million gallons in that day was pumped. That's not your all-time peak, your all-time peak was closer to 18, 19, but we didn't have any more data for those. And so we, and basically, we took the 20, 2016 number and updated globally to make that number. The other thing we did, the big component of this thing, and what was available through your AMR data, is we took hourly flows from each meter and created a diagonal pattern. So basically, throughout the day, you have a fluctuation in water use, and it shows, you end up with a peak at 7:00 in the morning of, about 1.4, I think is the number on my chart, if I can get down to it.
Memory.
And around 1.4, almost 1.4 at 7:00 in the morning, and then also you have another peak, it's your big peak in the afternoon, in the evening at 8:00 of 1.81. That's significant because it shows the demand on your system throughout the day. It's typically, people wake up in the morning, turn the showers on, demand goes up, they go to work, the demand goes down, they get home, they start washing dishes, washing clothes, running the sprinklers, and so that increases your demand. With that, we think the, the modern model is, we have a very accurate model based on the new technology that y'all have employed, and so that helped us develop your model and check your system. We get there, I'm going to go down to the end and talk about our recommendations on the system. And if you look at table 4.2.1, that's, that's the recommendations and things that we found that need upgrades in the future. The first one is a, is a 16-inch main near the intersection of Main and Vine that would connect to the, to the north zone. The north zone currently isn't moved to that location. Right now, we're awaiting completion of the Tower 5 pump station, and once that's complete, we will relocate the water zones in order to better balance the pumping in each side to meet the, meet the, meet the demand, meet the ability of each plant. So in doing that, that provides additional flows in, in, from that 24-inch main that serves the north zone in that Main and Vine location. That, that generally occurs around 68,000 people, which happens pretty close to now. The next upgrade we recommend is a high, an additional high-service pump that pumps to the north zone. That, that recommendation is approximately 71,000 people. Pumping is, is not exact when it comes to service pumps like that, because you're required to pump the peak, and we're making the peak, so it's, it's a little gray, but that's about the recommendation we said. The next thing is, is a TCEQ requirement that requires that 0.6 gallons a minute per connection, raw water pumping, and that, and that's an additional raw water pump. That, that would be required at a population of 81,000. We would require another medium service pump at 84,000. When the population reaches approximately 90,000, we recommend constructing the new high-service main, which would connect from the surface water plant, the downstream of the high-service pumps, and connect to the intersection near, near Navarro and St. Houston. And that would, that would provide additional service and additional pressures to that side of town. And in that time also, and a lot of this depends on how the development, as, how's the city develops, 98,000 people, a lot more people from the town, but in that, we also recommend constructing a ball airport main that would connect Tower 6 to the Navarro area, Tower 6 located off 87. And then finally, to meet the 101, as you reach 101,000, it would require another high-service pump. We based our, we stopped at that, at that location because that's about how much water you can produce. After that, future expansions would have to be made in some major components to, to move forward. Any questions?
Good reports. I actually enjoyed reading these, and I'll be honest, I don't read everything I get, I can't, but these were interesting.
There's a lot of questions I have to ask, but most of them are not pertinent to this discussion, really. See, the 20% mix of groundwater to surface water, I thought we were running 15. Is this the maximum?
That is the maximum recommended amount to mix.
I'd like that, and it shows that we have 10 wells, shows eight of them in the, in the south zone, but doesn't mention any in the north zone. Where's the two missing wells?
I'm not sure exactly, but I don't, I don't.
See, in the front here, it says we got, had 15 wells, we're down to 10.
Yes, sir.
We got eight in the south zone, where's the other two?
I think eight of them pump directly to Plant 3. Is that correct?
That'd be Page 1.
Yeah, there's eight, should be eight pumping directly to Plant 3, and then the other two is Well 19 and Well 21 down in the, in the park. And 19 is the one that's the ASR demo project right now.
Okay.
This was done, unfortunately, you know, that, this was done before that issue happened with ASR well.
Yes, sir, yes.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, and then Well 21 also pumps directly to the surface water treatment plant.
Okay, thank you.
I think before Matt sits down, and, you know, I think it's worthwhile to make a statement, you know, is that the council, years before you, but currently, we've done our planning work, we, you know, we have looked at population growth, we've invested in the water and wastewater system as needed, and we will continue doing that. The nice thing about these recommendations, Donald can feed this into his CIP for water and wastewater, and as the population grows, he'll know where we need to go, so, but, you know, you mentioned that earlier in the wastewater, that, you know, we're, our system's in good shape, and it has been because there's been so much planning through the years.
That is.
So.
It's about how, you know, how we spend our money, you know, the, the data, you may not, previously, you might have built a new plant when maybe you could have had a different a different way of treating the same amount of water and storing it differently, and so, yeah, it makes, it's a smarter decision.
Well, it's never a stagnant or end point. We always constantly need to reevaluate before the best we can. Same thing with streets and everything else.
And Matt did a great job taking a lot of data and drilling it down to a very concise report that was very easy to understand and greatly appreciated, Matt.
Thank you. And if you have any detailed questions, we can go play with the model. I enjoy it.
You've got it, right?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, you have one more item?
Yes, that's Thomas to talk about Gary Moore's claim.
Okay.
Yes, sir. On the May 15 council meeting, you'll remember that a citizen, Gary Moore, came to the podium to request reconsideration of a claim he had filed against the city, which had been denied. City manager asked that I give a more detailed report tonight in order to go over why the claim was denied and to make a recommendation to you on that reconsideration. The accident, the, the damage to Mr. Moore's vehicle occurred back on March 24. He was driving on Rio Grande Street. He turned north onto Lewis, and he drove into a sinkhole, a pothole, that had been caused by a water, a water line break at that location. The water leaking had filled the hole and obscured it from his view, so he didn't see the hole until his truck drove into it. That water line leak was reported to our Public Works Department that same morning at 7:50 a.m. by a caller named Diego, and our Public Works Department fixed that water main leak the same day by 1 p.m. But in the meantime, Mr. Moore had driven into that hole and done significant damage to his truck. The estimates for the repairs to his truck totaled $3,043, so it was a fairly significant amount of damage to his vehicle. He filed a claim with the city, and as with all claims that are filed with the city, we send those off to our insurance carrier for a coverage determination. We do that to protect the city against claims that we are playing favorites with who we're paying money out to. We allow an independent third party to make that determination. They denied the claim on March, excuse me, on April the 11th. They, in their letter to Mr. Moore, they explained to him that the Texas Torque Claims Act does not waive sovereign immunity in all cases, only in certain situations, and where the, where the city is not liable for damage, they cannot pay. Mr. Moore then approached our office. He came and sat down and talked with me, where I explained the situation to him, and I know that he also spoke with Ms. Garrett in her office before finally appealing to you for reconsideration of that claim denial. It's important that council understand that the law does not allow the city to pay this kind of claim. I want to make sure everyone is clear on that point because this is not an uncommon claim. We probably get three or four of these type of claims a year where someone drives their car through a pothole or over a curb or some other traffic furniture, and they do some damage to their vehicle. The city is not liable in those cases and is prohibited from paying those claims. The reason for that is the Texas Torque Claims Act only waives sovereign immunity if the damage was caused by motor-driven vehicles or motor-driven equipment. If it's, if we didn't cause the damage using motor-driven vehicles or motor-driven equipment, then we are not liable. We are not responsible for the damage to those claims. You couple that sovereign immunity with the gift of public funds doctrine in the Constitution. The Constitution says that we cannot provide a gift of public money to a private citizen without receiving public benefit in exchange. And so if we were to pay a claim that we are not liable to claim, to pay, it would be a gift to that individual, and it would be prohibited under the Constitution. And so we cannot legally pay that claim, even though his vehicle was damaged on a public street. And I, I make this explanation to citizens somewhat regularly who come into the office and, and have a hard time understanding why the city won't pay for the damage to their vehicle. It's typically tires or rims that they've put on their car. But unfortunately, in this situation, it would be illegal for council to reconsider his claim and to choose to pay it.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation. Does council have any questions, Mr. Gush? Okay. Seeing that we have no further business?
No, sir.
I didn't miss anything? Okay. Thank you, we're adjourned.